Other people in the room. The meeting is run by Robert Rules of Order, where they're not in conflict with Vermont law. A voter wishing to speak shall address the moderator and be recognized. All discussions, questions, or comments shall be directed to the moderator. No back and forth between meeting members. After a person has spoken, they will not be called upon again until all others requesting to seek had an opportunity to speak. Anyone wishing to speak must be a voter or have the consent of the meeting. Only voters may bring their ballots to the ballot box. Anyone needing assistance, a justice of the peace will pick up your ballot and bring it forward. Seven voters may ask for a paper ballot. And if there are any issues with that, you can bring that to our attention. With that, we'll leave the checklist.
Elizabeth Agassini, Susan Ahn, Amy Aldrich, Scott Aldrich, Amanda Elsberg here, Cherie Elsberg here, Eric Elsberg.
Here.
Shirley Elsberg, Elise Amanna, Emily Amanna, Crystal Amadon, Bridgette Anderson, Jean Anderson, Catherine Anderson, Robert Anderson, Uchi Artoo.
Here.
Douglas Avery, Michael Bates, Nathan Venus.
Here.
Kate Venus, Jacqueline Venus, Anthony Benoit, Sean Benoit, Mark Berman, Tamara Berman, Catherine Bylee, Carol Vingham, Eels, Loretta Bissinette, Jason Bissinette, William Forsy.
Yep.
Michelle Blue Rice, Kathleen Mova.
Here.
Robert Over, Mary Brass, Laura Bright, Russell Brown, Richard Huber, Kelsey Birch, Peter Verneau, David Byrne, Donald Capitelli.
Here.
Sandra Capitelli.
Here.
Adam Chase, Charles Chase, James Chase, Heather Shador, April Cox, John Cox, Corey Colvin, Hillary Cook, Cassandra Crane, Nathaniel Crane, Barbara Crosby, Donna Courier.
Here.
Candace Damon, Emily DeVignan, Elaine Davis, Elmer Davis, Kenneth Davis, Mary Davis, Leonard Derby III, Paul D'Nusso, Frederick Robert, Carmen Dresser, Anita Doobie, Austin Doobie, Landon Doobie, Erin Duffleby, Don Elliott, Jane Elliott, Joshua Ferentz, Elena Fine, Rebecca Fine, Steven Fine, Cora Fletcher, Timothy Fletcher, Douglas Francis, Kristen Garro, Gary Gay, Krista Gay.
Here.
Tammy Gay, Sabrina Gibbs, Scott Gibbs, Roger Gillespie, Sandra Gillespie, Christopher Glevins, Deborah Glevins, Stephen Godfrey, Melissa Goyet, Mark Rico, Jonathan Griffin, Jesse Grover, Nathan Guest, Bradley Gwynn, William Hall, Ralph Harris, Tammy Harris, David Hassan, Kim Healy, Valerie Hebert, Emmerah Henman, Bonnie Hitchcock.
Here.
Diane Hitchcock.
Here.
Cole Hitchcock, Raymond Hitchcock, Scott Hitchcock, Bartlett Holmes, Jacqueline Holmes, Gretchen Horton, Jean Hoteling, Demi Ghul, Michael Ghul, Michael R. Ghul, Dennis Hunt.
Here.
Karen Hunt, Beverly Hutchins, Thomas Hutchins, Lori Indenbaum, Samuel Indenbaum, David Jacobson, Carmen Jones, Jabarret Jones, Philip Jones, Nina Kendall, Elaine Keyes, Mary Kusadner, Joanna Lake, Christine Larson, Taylor Larson, Angela Lashway, Lima Leland, Caleb Lemieux, Patricia Letts, Isaac Wesley, Joseph Levangi, John Lindblad, Linda Lindblad, Samuel Lockerbie, Carol Long, April Lyman.
Here.
Doug Lyman, James May, Mary May, Terri May, Chris Carista Machado, John Majewski.
Here.
Virginia Majewski.
Here.
Deborah Matt, Kevin Matt, Cheryl Mauer.
Here.
Jonathan Maloney, Manny Mansback, Edmund Martin, Megan Masco, Pat McCaffery, William McGivney, Tracy Miller Sweet, Abigail Minor, Dennis Marante.
Here.
Ellen Marante, Grace Mooney, Lynn Morgan.
Here.
Philip Morgan.
Here.
James Nehart, Timothy Nehart, Derek Norris, Michelle Norris, Michiko North, excuse me, Alyssa Noyes.
Here.
Corey Noyes.
Here.
Daniel Noyes, Harold Noyes.
Here.
Nathaniel Noyes, Patricia Noyes, Rebecca Noyes.
Here.
Tanya Noyes.
Here.
Tracy Noyes, Stephen Oops.
Yep.
John Overling.
Here.
Jeff Falecki, Avijit Farmer Guest, Judith Farmer Guest, Jeremy Peach, Eleanor Perry, Elizabeth Perry, Janet Perry here, Matthew Perry.
Here.
Michael Perry.
Here.
Andrea Phillips, Rita Bichette.
Here.
Benjamin Pix, Justin Poole, Peter Prescott, Doreen Pugh, Denise Randall.
Here.
Elizabeth Randall, Frederick Randall, Joshua Randall, Sarah Rata, Hannah McGier.
Here.
Sheila Ritchie, Kenneth Roberts, Eric Rosenbloom.
Here.
Joshua Ross, Nicole Ross, Lucius Rumroth, Philip Rumroth, Don Routh Jackson, Julie Routh Jackson, Pam Russo, Evan Savitali, Mary Ann Shaughnessy, Matthew Shea, Eric Sheary, Sarah Sheltre, Dean Silver, Susan Silver, George Simmons, George Simmons Jr., Donna Semino, Philip Semino, Lois Sipple, Barbara Smith, Brianna Smith, Daniel Smith, Jennifer Smith, Duane Snide, Erwin Snide Jr., Mary Sonnixon, Alexis Spivey, Alexandria Steele, Amber Stevens.
Here.
Dolly FH Stevens, Ivor Stevens.
Here.
Elaine Stevens, Morgan Stevens, Timothy Stevenson.
Here.
Matthew Stickney, Wayne Stone, Carrie Streeter, Alexis Taylor, Daniel Taylor.
Here.
Kylie Taylor, Linda Taylor.
Here.
Tara Taylor, Thomas Taylor.
Here.
Tyson Taylor, Nicole Tivaldi, Adrian Tenney, Bruce Tenney Senior, Bruce Tenney Junior.
Here.
Gerald Tenney, Matthew Tenney, Patricia Tenney, Jonathan Thomas, Edward Todd, Joyce Todd, Andrew Topfer, Mark Trickman, Mark Trinhoe, Crystal Timbo, Trimble.
Here.
James Trimble.
Here.
Linda Tripotti, Jessie Unwin, Kenneth Unwin, Andrew Vallab, Brian Vallab, Renee Van Karen, Louis Vitalli, Sarah Vitalli, Margaret Walker, Terrence Walker, Anna Warren.
Here.
David Warner, Amika Warriors, Stephen Warriors, Jay White, Raymond White, Tina White.
Here.
Bruce Whitman, Russell Whitford, Deborah Whitker here. Devin Elliot Whitker, Zachariah Whitker.
Here.
Michelle Wilkins, Ralph Wilkins, Jenna Williams, Jimmy Williams.
Here.
Sharon Williams, Henry Woodbury, Catherine Woodbury, Arlene Lyman here, and Jacqueline Whiteboard.
All right, there are a couple of people that came in. Can you give their names to the clerk?
Lake, Joanna Lake.
On your side?
Oh, I, she got me.
You're not, oh gee.
Came in in time.
All right, Article One, to see if the town shall eliminate the position of elected road commissioner and that the select board shall perform all duties now conferred by law upon the road commissioner of the town of Athens as of the first Tuesday in March 2023. Is there a motion on this?
Motion, they don't stay the way they are.
Well, I think we need a, a, a motion to do it. You'll make a mo, to do, to.
Eliminate.
You, you will make.
I'll make the motion to eliminate.
All right. And then, yes, and there's a segment. Is there discussion on this?
I just have a question. I'd like to know what are the sort of pros and cons of having had a road commissioner versus what we think we'll see if it comes to the select board.
Well, one of you want to comment on that, or Matt, do you want to comment on it?
The road commissioner just reports back to the select board on whatever the select board asks them to, as far as I know. I mean, you know, the road conditions, if, you know, they have.
Tom?
It seems from the select board meetings that I've attended, the position of road foreman and road commissioner kind of gets confused. In practice, the road foreman has been bringing needs to the select board, and the select board's been doing the approval. So, so it seems in practice that the select board has been assuming a role of road commissioner anyway.
Dennis?
It has nothing to do with the road commissioner position, but I noticed, I got a town report that goes all the way back to 2008, and either the second or third article of each of those reports was to act on town reports.
Yes.
And I'd like to know why that is missing this year, and it would be a good opportunity to address what's in our town report now.
Well, we are discussing Article One, so we can't go on for that. We can bring that up at the end of the meeting if you want, Dennis.
I don't, I don't want to wait till the end of the meeting. I think we should discuss what's in the report now while people are here, and so wait till the end, when a lot of people could be listening.
Well, we're on Article One at this point in time, Dennis, so that's what we're working on and taking off at this point.
Am I supposed to say my name or something?
Sure.
Kate Bova. I just wanted to clear it up, and if I have it wrong, correct me. For anybody that's here that's not familiar of what road commissioner is, in my understanding, it is not a paid position, so if you vote it down, you're not taking somebody's job away, and it, it's something that the road commissioner makes suggestions to the select board who already make the decisions. Is this correct?
It's correct, the select board would make the decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any, yes?
Uh, Dave, I have a question. The January select board meeting, you said that last year, we voted in the 2020 road commissioner, uh, 2022. But if you look back at every other town book, it expires every single year. So why did you say you don't vote one in for this current year?
It is on the ballot, and there is, it is somebody who's going to be elected road commissioner this year. If this passes in 2023, the position will, will fall back to the select board and not the road commissioner. But we voted last year to elect one at this meeting to do that, so you can't take it away this year.
So is what you're saying, this term, the term of that position expires at the end of '22, not during the March meeting?
No, the, the term, the, for the last election ends today, and whoever is elected today will start today and continue on. But we voted last year to elect a road commissioner, and that would, that takes precedence of this meeting because it was by Australian ballot. If, if that were on the warning this year to whether we should elect a road commissioner, then that could be eliminated, but because we're voting by Australian ballots for the candidates, it can't be, it can't be done this year.
Mr. Moderator, if, so are you saying that March 2023, next year's meeting, there will not be an Article Four road commissioner? So that is only for one more year, and then it's eliminated?
Until the town votes to bring the position back.
Okay. So we're just voting to have one more year of a road commissioner, and then if they don't, then we do not have a road commissioner after this year?
Well, the select board will fill in as the position of road commissioner.
Yeah, right. Okay, so why not eliminate now?
Sandy?
I did a little research on this, and road commissioner many, many years ago was done by our select board, and then at some point it was decided to have somebody voted in as a road commissioner. Road commissioner basically is a mediator between the road foreman and the select board. But in the case of our town, it has always been that the road commissioner is the road foreman. So it becomes a redundant position, and it really isn't a necessary position, and we have a very hard time, as is, filling positions in this town. So if it's redundant and it's not a necessary position, why are we keeping it?
All right. Anybody else? Sharon?
Sharon, huh? I am not opposed to eliminating the position, and particularly a lot of what Sandy just said about it, but I'm still not clear, and I guess I question the fact that if we vote yes on this article, that it doesn't take effect immediately. And I, I, I know I brought this out at the select board meeting back in January when the articles were being reviewed, but my recollection is that in the past, at a meeting, we were asked whether or not to elect a road commissioner in every town meeting that I recall meeting at in this town. And in that meeting, in meetings of that nature, I remember it being said that, well, okay, we're, if we say no, we won't elect a road commissioner, then when we went on to elect officers, we wouldn't have elected a road commissioner that day from the floor. So my question is, if we vote yes now, why is it different now? Why is that position not just put aside?
Well, we're voting by Australian ballot, and this article says that it will be eliminated the first Tuesday in March. Anybody else? Yes, Chris?
I have a question. So if the town essentially wanted to eliminate the road commissioner position this year, could they just write in the select board for the position?
Probably do that.
Okay, I think that would make sense then, if people want to do that this year.
Or, or if the road commissioner wanted to resign after being elected, then it could become, the select board can take over those functions issue.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I bought you, that you were in and not even.
Well, what if we just keep it blank? That, you could do that too. But, yeah, you can leave it blank. All right? Any more discussion? Are you ready for the question? Article One, to see if the town shall eliminate the position of elected road commissioner and that the select board perform all the duties conferred by law upon the road commissioner of the town as of the first Tuesday in March 2023. Are you ready for the vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and you have approved Article One.
So that means that they are not under the name of it?
It is eliminated.
It is?
Yes. A yes vote means to, an affirmative on the article. And before we go on any further, does anybody have any questions to that, that the position was eliminated? Because once we go to an article, we cannot return to that. All right, Article Two.
David, point of information, I would like to go back to the question that Dennis raised now that we're not talking about Article One.
All right.
Because that, that article that has always been, and I'd have to look at an older town report, but to act on town reports has been the opportunity when, if there were any corrections or questions on numbers that were in any of the reports, it was the opportunity for people who were involved in it to put that information out.
So if you want us to suspend regular order and review the town report, we can do that. If there is no objection, we can do that, and do that now, suspend regular order to review the town report. Is there any objection to that? If not, then we will, we will review it. One, one thing that is different on this, that there is no Article 13. It goes from Article 12 to Article 14, just so people are aware of that. Dennis?
David, I'm gonna tell, be honest with you, I have an issue with you being moderator, because every time I try to seek out and suggest something, you seem to cut me off and just want to move on. I had a legitimate question about that article, and you shut me right down, put it off till later and everything, and that's not right. That's not what this town meeting is about.
But I'll do respect to Mr. Maranti, you were following parliamentary procedure, so you have the unfortunate position of doing what you have to do. Do you want to speak on the town report now, Dennis?
Yeah, I do. I noticed that the brick meeting house fund is still owing the housing rehabilitation fund $15,000. And this loan to the meeting house has been going on for a number of years. I think it's time that the select board eliminate this $15,000. It's basically owed to the town. We have $29,000 sitting in a town's office renovation fund, which no work has really been done in the last few years. We have a planning commission with $1,200, and nothing's been happening in the planning commission, and we got over $47,000 in delinquent taxes. So I think somewhere in his town's budget, we could dig up $15,000, pay off that loan that the meeting house took from the housing rehabilitation fund, and at least let the committee work and progress with that building house, that meeting house, without having to address this $15,000.
I think you make a very good point.
All right, anybody else on the town report?
I guess. We have delinquent taxes owed by people, and I think it should be not permitted for anyone who is delinquent in taxes to be able to hold an elected paid position in the town. If they want to hold a position and the town wants to allow that, fine, but any wages or pay they may get from the town, I think should be directed to their delinquent tax bill.
I don't think you can legally do that.
You don't legally deny it.
If you can't, so if somebody is elected to a position, like, they have to be there, and then since they're a government employer, you have a constitutional protected property right to what you're doing?
You prevent them from, well.
No.
No, because you, the people are allowed to vote in, government's not.
Yep.
And so you can't prevent somebody from taking office if they've been elected, and then since they're a government body, they can't withhold somebody's wages or something like delinquent taxes.
But I believe with tax bills gone up substantially, and we, I don't see any way that we're collecting.
I'm clearly saying, but I don't think, I just wanted to point out that I don't, you can't do that.
All right. The tax collector, she has indicated that they are collecting taxes on that. That is as of January 1st, so there is probably more that has been collected.
Well, I guess on that point, on the delinquent taxes, also, which, sorry, I think that we should, we should consider before trying to implement some kind of solution or withholding taxes or stuff, that we should investigate why this, why delinquent taxes are rising. I think it's important to recognize in the pandemic, overall, we, people have lost jobs, lost childcare, people in general are more food insecure, that's 25% of Vermonters, right? Like, there are other necessities besides taxes that may be barriers to paying those taxes, and just want to put that out there before we put a solution on that, we should know why.
Okay. Anybody else? Sharon?
And acknowledging what, what she just had to say about the hard times that we're in, I'm just wondering whether or not we can get an updated number on where delinquent taxes stand at this point?
Look at the delinquent tax report.
I'm sorry?
Look at the delinquent tax report.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you.
Look at the delinquent tax report in the, but in the.
As a town report?
I see it, right, but I just, I believe I just heard that more taxes have been collected.
Yes.
So can we get a current number on where the delinquent?
I can give that to you if you come to the office. I don't have it, I don't remember what it is.
So we don't know where that stands right now?
No, the exact figure.
Right. Okay.
The figure, it's in the town report, it's out, it's out, okay?
Right, I understand that.
I understand.
All right. Tom?
How come there's no report from the road commissioner in this book or the thought man on what's coming up that they're gonna do and what they have done? Every year, for quite a few years, we've always had one in, and there's nothing in there this year. So I'm wondering if anybody can explain to me what's coming up that they're gonna do and what has been done?
Matt, would you like to speak to this?
Oh, yeah, in the budget, we're gonna be doing some underground, we've got some hedge basins to put in down on the lower road, and some culverts to replace on Cemetery Hill, a couple on Reed Road, and we gotta act, we gotta work on our ditches, so we can pass the 15% on the Act 60, 64 or 68, I forget the number. Well, we have to be at the 15% mark, I think it's next year, the year after, to keep our funding for the watershed. I forget the name of it, but yeah. That's our goals for this year.
All right, anything else? If, if not, we, Sharon?
I would be interested in hearing about the status of equipment and with regards to the fact that we have an equipment fund, and if there's any large purchases coming out of that, replacements, et cetera.
I believe we are hoping to replace the large truck within two years. We have replaced the backhoe with a savings of about $15,000, and that will be here shortly, hopefully, and those are the major purchases for equipment.
So then, does that mean, I mean, again, these numbers are as of January 1st, so where does that stand? where does that stand currently?
It stands where it is right now.
So those all happened prior to December 31st?
Well, we have not purchased a new truck. We are planning to, within the next couple of years, purchase a new truck. The backhoe, we have ordered it, and it will be trading in the one that we have now. Anybody else? Tom?
You just said you made $15,000 in the equipment fund. How come the equipment fund is up $11,000 this year? And how come the backhoe got traded when it was on a 10-year lease?
We got the appraisal of the backhoe last, I'd say, fall, and to trade up and get a warranty, because we couldn't get a warranty on the existing backhoe, because it, the warranty was expiring, was going to cost $49,000 to upgrade to a brand-new one, because they were giving us, I believe it was $89,000 for our backhoe that we have. And it seemed prudent at the time to trade up, with it only costing us $49,000 to do it at this time, instead of letting things start to deteriorate on the backhoe, breaking down, and seeing it's the only piece of equipment that we have to load our sand, gravel, and salt, we need something reliable. So that's why we decided to trade in the backhoe and get a new one.
That answered one question, but it still didn't answer $11,000 I'll put in the, in the equipment fund.
Tom, I can answer that. The bulk of that is for a new snowplow that's needed for the small truck. It's starting to put in some money so that we can replace snowplows in the future without putting a great big chunk like that in, again.
All right. There's no more questions, we will move on to Article... One more.
Yeah, sorry. I'm seeing here in the emergency road work, that we found a lot of them last year, and that was under the base flood that you had.
Yep.
And I'm noting that for this coming budget, we don't have any money set for that, and I'm, and I'm wondering if we're, in the future, going to try to plan for more of these floods, considering they're, they're going to continue to happen more and more.
We do have in the budget, we've set aside some money for matching grants and stuff to help with that. And fortunately, this year, you know, FEMA and the state's covering the flood damage, it's just a matter of time, and we'll get the money. So that's what we're doing about that right now.
It's covering the percentage, it's not covering the entire thing.
Yeah.
All right. We'll move on to Article two. Shall the town of Athens expand the select board from three to five members? There are no changes.
I'll move that we do.
Is there a second to that? Is there discussion? Dennis?
I would vote against that. I wonder, is the select board so overwhelmed with business that you need two more members?
Was the petition brought to the select board this time?
Well, how does the select board feel? Do you think you're so overwhelmed with responsibility and duties that you need two more members?
Not that we're overwhelmed with responsibility and duties, it just gives a broader view on things.
It, it just seems ironic that we're, we're counted, the last census shows less than 400 people, and we're having a hard time, we have been having a hard time filling other important positions in town. Nobody that I know is running for the Union High School District Representative. We had a late-night writing candidate for an empty school, K through eight school position that has been vacant, and then we haven't, we've been short an auditor for, we don't have a candidate for the third position of auditor this year. I mean, it's, there's, there's a lot of responsibility living in a little town, and we, quite frankly, need more people to step up. And I don't know, I get part of me can't help thinking that we're, that a certain group of people want to pack this board, and I, I don't know where the candidates are coming from. Who else?
Mike, Sherri. Could I ask whoever submitted this article, please stand up and tell us why you do anything to have it, five selectmen instead of three? I, I just want to know the reason.
I'm not sure who submitted the petition, but if anybody wants to speak on that, they can. Sherri?
Yeah, Sherri Marr. I signed the petition, I did not submit it, and I appreciate the concerns that are being raised about the difficulty finding people to fill positions. I think for myself, I, I think about this three-person board as, well, there's a couple of issues. I think one of them is that it's difficult to avoid potential conflicts of interest, and that's been a conversation that's happened a lot in board meetings of late. So with a three-person board right now, we have some questions about conflicts of interest with our current members. When that body goes into executive session to make decisions, I think there are some challenges there again, in part coming back to the conflict of interest issue. If one of the board members in that meeting were to refuse themselves because of a conflict of interest, then we would only have two board members making a decision, and they could be in a tie, and then there might not be any outcome to come from that discussion. In addition to that, I think about the challenge for our three board members who, and maybe I'm overinterpreting this, but my understanding of open meeting law is that anytime the two of them come together, they cannot discuss town business, because that would be a violation of open meeting law. And that's a challenge, I would assume, on the board members. So it, having additional people on there could help to reduce that burden. I didn't fully hear what Denise said on the question that was raised initially as to the burden on the board, and I think I did hear you say something about expanding viewpoints, and I would certainly echo that. I'm sorry that there does seem to be a sentiment about packing the board with this, but I do think that the town could be served by having a slightly larger select board.
All right. Okay.
I also signed that petition, and I do agree, at this time particularly, being able to find additional select board people could be a challenge, but I know several times, not in the past year or two, but in past meetings, at being at select board meetings, when a select board member had to excuse themselves from the vote, and it did end up in a tie, the issue was tabled, and then never brought up again. So that would be my reason for thinking that additional board members, five, would be to the advantage, but disadvantage of trying to find people to fill those positions.
All right. Any other discussion? Anybody, wait a minute, anybody else have any? Dennis?
We've had a three-member board for as long as I can remember, and up until a couple of years ago, there was a member of the select board that should have recused themselves many times over the years, but didn't. This wasn't an issue until a couple of years ago. And now, once that member left the board, all these things have become an issue, about the recusing and conflict of interest and all that. So like I said, when it goes to stacking the board in a certain direction, I tend to believe that's what's going on here.
Before I call on you, Kate, anybody else have anything?
I don't think it wasn't, that it wasn't an issue in the past. I believe it's just nobody ever took the initiative to put forward a petition to abseill people. So it's not that things did not happen, it was just, nobody wanted to bother bringing it up.
Any else? My question? Oh, no, no, no.
I don't know how often this conflict of interest has arrived. It seems to me that the business always got done, everything functioned okay, the town is still here, it's worked out okay with three people. I think having five is going to wind up having more arguments and taking more time to come to decisions. So I think three on the board for a town the size is appropriate.
So my question is, why, over those 30-plus years, wasn't this an issue? You know, we can argue about it today that it wasn't brought up, but why wasn't it brought up? Why all of a sudden now, it's an issue, and we need five members instead of three? What's, what's the difference? What changed? I don't, I don't hear any arguments that really justify adding two members.
I do know, many times, a member refused themselves from decisions that would affect that in the past, many times.
I don't remember that either.
That is true. The member has recused himself.
Not when I was on the board.
Yes, yes.
We were voting for the town plan, as well as the town policy, right? There was a member on the board who was directly affected, and they voted on a lot of things, and when somebody questioned about their requirement to refuse, they stormed out of that meeting and said they were done. So as soon as they were approached or challenged on refusal, they lost their temper and walked out of the meeting.
Well, I know that there were many times during that period that a board member would refuse themselves if it had, if it had to do with, with them or their, their business. And you can look in the minutes to find that, so Carol?
I move we call the others.
All right. Is there a second? Sandy seconded.
I made the motion that we have to take it out.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, we're cutting off debate? This, that's the, Sandy, you seconded the motion to cease, cease debate? All right. All those in favor of ceasing debate and moving on to, and voting on Article two, signify by saying an aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. And Sandy, you made a motion for, to...
Paper ballot.
Do paper ballot. If, if there are seven people that want a paper ballot, raise your hand. There is more than seven, so we will have a paper ballot. A yes will be to increase the board from three members to five, a no will be not to do that. Results of your vote, 26 yes, 23 no, so you have adopted Article two. Article three, to see if the town shall vote to authorize the select board to borrow money, if necessary, for current expenses in anticipation of collection of taxes. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Is there?
Is there any discussion? If not, are you ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying an aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, you have passed Article three. Article four, to see if the town shall vote to collect taxes on the 10th of September 2022.
I just want to ask a clarifying question.
Yeah.
I was curious if my Article four is going to affect?
Yeah, it will go into effect today.
Today?
Yes. Article four, to see if the town shall vote to collect taxes on the 10th of September 2022. Is there a second? Second?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there any discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor, to see if the town shall vote to collect taxes on the 10th of September 2022, signify by saying an aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, you have approved Article four. Article five, to see if the town shall vote to publish a list of delinquent taxpayers in the town report.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
I have a question. What's the benefit of publishing the names? Because to me, it just seems like an embarrassment, as we mentioned earlier, there are various reasons people can't pay taxes, and I'm just curious why that's any, like, is there a public benefit to that, to knowing who hasn't paid taxes in the town?
I'm not sure there is, but it's, it's a state law that we vote on it to decide whether to publish it or not.
Right, I was just wondering if a town saw a benefit of doing that, because to me, it just seems, if there's not one, that it's just to embarrass people. So I was just, just clarifying if there was a benefit.
Is it possible, like, if we vote, say we vote no on this, does that mean that just the list of the people who are delinquent taxpayers won't be published, but the numbers will?
The numbers will still be published.
Okay.
I'm fairly named a town, but I feel like the, the reason for that was actually brought up in the previous article where we were talking about voting for officers and knowing whether or not they have delinquent taxes due to the town. I don't know all the individual people that I'm potentially voting into office for the town, so that is a point of information to me. If I'm voting for someone that owes the town potentially a bunch of money into a position to make decisions for the town, that, that's important for me to know. So that would be the only reason I would see in having that information available.
Any other discussion?
I kind of agree with you that it's, it's archaic public shaming, you know, stand up and be pilloried by the town. I, I just don't think it's a, it's a humane thing to do.
Any other discussion? Sure.
I appreciate Zach's comment. I guess I would wonder if we were to say no on this, whether or not it would be public information that's one could get from the town if it wasn't published in the report. And it has been informative in the past, for sure.
It is, there is a lien on any property that is delinquent in taxes, and that would be public information.
So then, are there liens on all of the properties that are listed on this?
That's correct. You cannot sell a piece of property until the taxes are paid.
And is that something which Sherri just said, since voting's by Australian ballot now, and the names are published in advance, if that is something that someone feels would affect their ability to vote for somebody in a position, which is totally understandable, if that is public information, if it matters to you, you can look it up. So I, I think that the benefit that has been raised of potentially publishing can be served in other ways, other than embarrassing people that have no desire to run for office and may just be on a hard time.
Is there any more discussion? Are you ready for the question? Move for paper ballot? Is there seven people that want paper ballot? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We will, they'll be by paper ballot, so eight. Yes will be to vote, to see if the town shall vote to publish a list of delinquent taxpayers in the county court. No will be not to publish. Results of your ballot. Article five, 26 yes, 23 no, you have approved Article five. If, when you wish to... If, when you wish to speak, if you could stand up for back TV so that they can get a better shot of you.
Smile pretty.
Article Six, to see if the town will vote to approve 578,489.20 with 374,232.31 to be raised by taxes to defray town expenses. Denise? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there discussion?
When you look at your budget reports, on page fifteen, kind of backing up like what Dennis was saying, you know, the fifteen thousand there, but a year ago, there was an article written up, however, saving seventy-five percent in salt. This year, in 2021, is actually like a little over eleven thousand you spent, but you up the salt budget again to thirty-five thousand. Why are we raising so much more than what you're actually spending? And there's a lot of different things down there that keep going up every year by even just a couple hundred dollars or whatever, but my big question is on the salt one.
Well, the salt one budget went up a lot because of the, we did, the cost went up almost, was it, it was seventy-three? Almost twenty dollars a ton.
Their salt prices are solidly within dollars of what it was last year.
We get it from Appalachian salt. The salt is a better quality, it lasts longer, and it works good on the roads.
But if we only spent eleven thousand, why are we raising so much extra?
Because the last two years, we've been using Appalachian salt. We'd like to get a, instead of cutting it down to ten or eleven thousand dollars per school, and then have a bad ice situation, storm after storm, and then have an overrun of the salt budget, it's better to have more in it and have a surplus than it is to have, not have enough.
Seems like an awful big surplus to keep carrying. Doesn't make a lot of sense when you put ten thousand dollars out of your salt budget before winter started and put into gravel, before anything was being used for gravel. It looks like it's a hiding place just to stash money.
They, you know, they're talking, still going back to the salt budget. You're up twenty-three thousand dollars this year, but if you look at the budget for 2021, it was thirty-two thousand. You only spent eleven. That leaves you twenty-one thousand dollars to put into this year. So there's forty-four thousand dollars there floating around.
It's not floating around. It's all accounted for.
It's spent off.
Well, we had, we had Hannah. Is she here?
Yes.
She's busy? We do use that money sometimes for other things, when we have situations that arise in town that needs the money, and instead of dropping taxpayer with a higher tax rate.
Amber, do you want to speak on that, about the surplus where it went?
When we were going over the budget, we were accounting for the increase, and then we're taking the amount of salt that they had used and multiplied by the increase and everything, so I think that's how we came up with thirty-five. I think that's how we calculated it. I mean, not that they've used in the last few years.
But they were saying that it's floating money around. There was a surplus. Do you want to discuss what happened with that, that we reduced taxes for the year?
I don't really, Hannah's the one that did that.
I'm not busy now. So what was the question?
About the surplus that we have, like for our salt and on the taxpayers. We had a surplus this year, and we used it to reduce the taxes.
Right. So we did have surplus. I don't have my notes for exactly how much it was, but we, so we put, what surplus we had towards reducing taxes, minus there was an article that we haven't voted on yet for putting fifteen thousand aside in a matching grant fund for using for any of the grants that might be coming along with all of the government money that's been coming into the state recently.
All right.
So if you see, you see what's left, I mean, you can see in here, there's a surplus line that, so what's going towards reducing taxes is fifty-six thousand, two hundred and six dollars and eighty-nine cents. That's common, in excess of what we budgeted last year.
Any more discussion? Are you ready for the question? To see if the town will vote to approve 578,489.20 with 374,232.31 to be raised by taxes to defray town expenses. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. And you've approved Article Six. Article Seven, shall the town of Athens vote to start a matching grant fund, using fifteen thousand dollars of surplus from the 2021 budget year, to be used for highways and the town of Athens projects approved by the select board? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on this?
So to be clear on what?
Hannah said that fifteen thousand will come out of the fifty-six thousand that you had for surplus?
No, that's already been, no, the fifty-six has already subtracted that fifteen. So basically, if you vote no on this current article, that would get added back on to reduce taxes by that much more, I believe.
So we would add the fifteen thousand to the fifty-six?
It would reduce the overall amount raised by that much. I mean, I'm not, I think the select board might, might have some say over how that fifteen got used if we said no, but I think that the intention was, if it was a no, that it would go towards reducing taxes more.
I feel like, I mean, in, in making an educated vote on this article, I would want some idea of what that money potentially is going to be used for. Like, are there projects already in the works that that money is potentially going towards, or?
There are projects in this building that, that they're being worked on, that we have applied for some grants for. There are road projects that we may need projects for. There are projects at the meeting house that we may need, and there are potentially projects with the town garage that we may need the matching funds. To be able to get the grants, we have to be able to say that we have matching funds for a project, for a grant, oftentimes.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that I'm clear on something. The fifty-six thousand surplus, in my understanding, contributes to the three hundred seventy-four thousand, two thirty-two mentioned in Article Six. So, and we've approved that amount to be raised by taxes. Now, if we approve this fifteen thousand, that gets added on to the three seventy-four. If on Article Eight, we approve the two fifty, that gets added on, and so on and so forth. Is I, I'm not correct in that?
You're not correct. The fifty-six is added into the five seventy-eight. Thank you. The fifteen will not add on to the three seventy-four. It will, if we have the surplus of the fifteen, that will, it will not be raised, it will not raise taxes to vote yes on Article Seven. Go, wait a minute, Dennis.
Well, over the last few years, I've seen a lot of improvements to our roads, and a lot of it has been helped by grants. I think it's a good idea to have a little pot of money there so when grants do come up, that we have the money without trying to scramble to figure out where we, where are we going to get the money? And that's the way I think. I think it's a good idea to have a little stash of money somewhere, and with the extreme weathers we've been getting and what they predict we should, might be getting in the future, it's nice to have a little reserve in place.
I just have a clarifying question. So the grants that we can get and that we were referencing, are those grants for anything in town or just for roads specifically?
No, anything.
Anything? Okay. Thank you.
I think in the past year, I've been working a lot with PMA and working on grants, and many grants that we want to apply for, we cannot apply for it unless we actually have that bank account that we have money to match. And what's coming up in the future, with all this money coming in from the federal government, is the first two years, most of those grants will only require a ten percent match, which means this fifteen grand we have may go further. After that, it's going to go back to the regular twenty percent match. So it's really important for this town, if we want to defray our own costs in the long run, we have that little pot of money to say, hey, we've got the matching money, we can apply for this grant.
All right. Anybody else? If not, we'll go back to Tina.
I'm still confused about the fifty-six thousand and the fifteen being surplus. So we have two surpluses. We have a fifty-six thousand dollar surplus that went towards taxes, and then we have a fifteen thousand surplus that we kept just to see if we were going to vote to keep that money. So we actually had over a seventy thousand dollar surplus. I guess that's the clarification that I want.
That is correct. We have over a seventy thousand dollar surplus.
Okay. That, that one.
And part of that was, I mean, I can explain why we have so much surplus a little bit, partly with because we spent less purposely because of pandemic concerns. Part of it was because we got some more money from the state for like, for highway stuff. And part of it was that we had raised more taxes than was required for the previous year. So we're trying to be transparent with that and make sure it goes back where it is.
All right. Any more discussion? Are you ready for the question? Article Seven, shall the town of Athens vote to start a matching grant fund, using fifteen thousand dollars of the surplus from the 2021 budget year, to be used for highway and town of Athens projects approved by the select board? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You have approved Article Seven. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty dollars to support the Women's Freedom Center to provide quality advocacy and support for the women and children of Athens. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a motion?
No.
Are there, is there any discussion on this? Are you ready for the question? Article Eight, to see if the town of Athens will vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty dollars to support the Women's Freedom Center to provide quality advocacy and support to the women and children of Athens. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You have approved Article Six. Not Article Eight. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote the sum, will vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred and thirty dollars to support youth services to serve the needs of youth and families in and around Wyndham County.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Article Nine, to see if the town of Athens will vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred and thirty dollars to support youth services to serve the needs of youth and families in and around Wyndham County. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You've approved Article Nine. Article Ten, to see if the town of Athens will raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars to Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEVCA, to assist Athens in responding to the emergency needs of the community and providing all available and appropriate services.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Ready for the question? Article Ten, to see if the town of Athens will raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars for Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEVCA, to assist Athens in responding to the emergency needs of the community and to providing all available and applicable services. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You have approved Article Ten. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty dollars for the Bellas Wall Senior Center.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Article Eleven, see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty dollars for the Bellas Wall Senior Center. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You have passed Article Eleven. Article Twelve, shall the town appropriate the sum of thirteen hundred and fifty dollars to help support the home health, maternal and child health, and hospice care provided in patients' homes and in community settings by the Visiting Nurses Association and Hospice of Vermont and New Hampshire?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, to see if the town will appropriate the sum of thirteen hundred and fifty dollars to help support the home health, maternal, child health, and hospice care provided in patients' homes and in community settings by the Visiting Nurses Association and Hospice of Vermont and New Hampshire? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Because of a clerical error, there was no Article Thirteen.
Superstition.
So we moved on to Article Fourteen, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the thousand dollars to assist Grafton Cares in providing a variety of assistance to the people of Athens.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Kate?
I, I just want to thank everybody in this town in all the past years that you've always supported Grafton Cares, and I encourage you to continue.
All right. Any more discussion? Are you ready for the question? Article Fourteen, to see if the town of Athens will raise and appropriate a thousand dollars to assist Grafton Cares in providing a variety of assistance to the people of Athens. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You have approved Article Fourteen. Article Fifteen, to set, if the town will appropriate the sum of three hundred dollars to assist senior solutions.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Ready for the question? Article Fifteen, to set, to see if the town shall raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred dollars to assist senior solutions. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have approved Article Fifteen. Article Fifteen, to set the time of future town meetings. They can vote for a Tuesday, Monday, or Thursday. Is there a second?
I'll get that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I would maybe ask for your help on this with regards to procedural practices. I feel like in this past year, and particularly in the discussion and the vote that happened back in December, we heard from the town that there were a lot of people that want to be able to participate in town meeting but can't be here on Tuesday morning at ten o'clock. Now that we've moved all the votes to an Australian ballot, I'm looking at my watch, and we have been here for an hour and twenty minutes. That, to me, suggests that the idea of having our town meeting perhaps on Monday night before the first Tuesday of the month, or at some other time, is maybe a much more doable idea at this point. And so I'm wondering whether, I, I see two possible options here. One would be that we postpone this decision on this motion, or that we move to send it to a committee to look at what other time might be- might be a good time for getting more people out to participate in our Town Meeting. And I'm not sure what is the right or the preferred better option for that path, but I think that there are paths for that, that we can hold on this decision right now and spend the next maybe six months trying to find out from more people in town how we could better serve them by setting this at a different time.
You could amend the motion to change the time, but to close it out, to not setting a time would be, I believe would be too much of a change in the motion to do that. So you could amend the motion to put it between Saturday and today, the Saturday preceding it, preceding the first Tuesday in March. Or you can, you can set it in that time period, but I don't believe you can set it and say, we will decide this in six months at that point.
No, I understand that. And that's why I'm wondering if postponing is the path to take to make that decision? And if, and/or if sending it to a committee to make that decision rather. So I guess maybe what you're saying is that if that were the path to take, that would be a motion now. We would vote yes on that and then we would come back.
Well, I don't think we can make a, I don't believe we can make a motion at this point in time to send it to a committee. I think we have to set a time with this motion the way it is. To defer that to a time specific would, would, I think that is too much of a change to the article to be able to do that. You could say, no, I want to amend it and make it Saturday or I want to amend it and make it Monday night. And then we would vote on that and then we would vote on the other article. The other, the other option that you might have is to vote and set a time on this now and a special Town Meeting could be held between now and the next Town Meeting. Well, between now and, near the end of January to set a different time for the Town Meeting. And it could be voted on again and that could happen. But at this point, we need to set a date. If we want to study it, you can do that. And if there is agreement that it should be changed to a different date, then a special Town Meeting could be called and it voted on again at that special Town Meeting.
I would, I would kind of combine them of like the assets, a day and time like for something that we think can't work. And then in further business, maybe try to see if we can issue some type of committee to review if that works for folks in town. Isn't that possible?
Well, the Select Board could certainly start a committee on that and have people look into it, do a survey, do, you know, talk to people about that and could do that. But at this point in time, I would say that we need to set a date, but a special meeting would have to be held to change what we vote to do.
That makes sense.
So, Chris.
Just off of what Wichi and Sherry said in the reference to the special Town Meeting. In December, we had almost double the people that we have here. And there was a lot of people that haven't been able to vote before because they work during the day. And I know that there's been issues with not a high turnout on the Saturdays before. That's been mentioned. But it seems like the evening, we had, what, 80, over 80 people here? And it was a lot of people that have jobs where you can't take off time. And I just think it's really important, especially with the push to include more of our neighbors to be able to vote, that it would be in the evening. If the Saturdays haven't worked before, just to allow more people to vote who can't. So I would be in support of moving it to the evening. And I believe West Minister does that. So there's precedent for it.
I think West Minister does it the Saturday before. Say Rockingham does their business meeting the night before on a Monday night. So the Towns can do that between, they have a window of between Saturday and today to do that, to set a different time for it. But it's within that window.
I was really encouraged to see so many people, especially people that normally can't vote because of.
Would it be appropriate if my distinguished neighbor here, Mr. Oaks, if he would maybe make a motion of 7:00 on Tuesday night instead of?
No, I have to go to bed early.
Stop it.
I don't.
Could he amend his own?
Well, we can vote his down or an amendment can be made to that. I would, I would not say that 7:00 on Tuesday night would be good because we have to count the ballots from the Australian ballot and the justices of peace and the ballot clerks and Town Clerk have to be there. So I would think a time to do it would be either a Monday, Saturday, Sunday, something like that. I mean, we can have a church service in Town Meeting if we want.
I'm happy with that.
All right, you said enough. My vast experience of this article over the years is that most of the people are pissed and moaned about that because they can't be here. They gotta work or something like that. When they don't work, they don't come anywhere. I mean, I've heard dozens of people over the years, oh, yeah, I can't come to this Town Meeting. I gotta work and I gotta do this or something. Then, then they change it and they don't come anywhere.
Does he get a lot of reasons to clarify something? If we were to change the date of the Town Meeting to either Monday evening or some other day, when would the Australian ballot votes be done?
The Australian ballot would be done on Town Meeting Day, which would be the first Tuesday in March.
So people would have to come out twice once for the meeting? And then if they wanted to vote the next day or prior or whatever, they'd have to come out a second time to do their Australian ballot.
Unless they got a ballot, yeah, unless they requested a ballot. So, all right. Oh, wait a minute. Tom?
We've tried to move in this Town Meeting around in the past years and it's never had work. We've never got more people than what we have here today. Night point meetings, we've tried it and we don't get any more people.
Never tried so.
I stick with Steve.
Thanks, Tom.
Me? I know several times it was changed to a Saturday. I think it didn't really get, a lot of people didn't pay attention to that, weren't aware of it. I think an evening is better because there are some folks that work all week and then don't want to give up a Saturday. Monday evening, if you have a meeting before you're going to vote, could be very informative to a lot of people. And trying it once doesn't, you try something once and say, oh, a lot of people didn't come. Didn't work. I think it takes more than once.
Well, I think we're all, you know, creatures of habit. And I think that time we tried it on the Saturday, people weren't even worried about it. They knew it was going to be the first Tuesday in March. And they didn't know it was going to be the Saturday before the first Tuesday. But the December meeting, you know, at the end of last year, like Sam, we had over 80 people. And that was a weeknight and I think it took place either 6:00 or 7:00. But to me, it seems like a Monday before the first Tuesday would be a good idea. And then publicize it.
I just wanted to clarify about voting. If we did the meeting on Monday evening, could we not have advanced ballots available?
You have an advanced ballot.
Then somebody only had to come out one?
You could request an advanced ballot, I believe, yes.
But you can't request it that night. You'd have to be done by the closing clock hours the day before.
Okay.
So we couldn't have them just out for anyone who shouldn't have come yet?
Anybody else before we go back to you?
I think, so I agree with Kate that I think we should, you know, even if it didn't work once or twice, that I don't think we should give up on being able to help people have access to voting and access to being able to be part of this process. And that's why, and I think maybe to Tom's point, that's why I would want to push, to Sherry's point, I would want to push for some type of committee that can be able to not only go around and ask, is this a time that you can make it? But also like what are barriers that you're facing? And also it helps spread the information that, hey, it's going to change it. We're trying to change it to make it more accessible. And I think that, that could go along with giving us a lot of information if not getting more people to come.
Anybody else before we go to Sherry? Sherry?
So I'm looking at a summary of some Robert's Rules. And maybe there's a piece, and I know both you and Don are probably more schooled in Robert's Rules than I am. If you want more study and investigation time, you can move to refer to a committee. So does that have to happen before the motion was seconded? For discussion? Or can that happen once discussion happens? Start.
You had the motion, so you have to act on the motion. So I don't believe we can send it to a committee at this point.
Okay.
Well, we could vote it down.
You could vote it down or you could amend this motion to, if somebody wanted it a different date and it would have to be within that window of Saturday to Tuesday, somebody could amend it. If there's a second to that, then we'll take up the amendment. And then we would vote on the original motion. So. So is that clear?
I wasn't, I wasn't quite finished.
Okay, go ahead.
So the other option that I had suggested was that we could possibly move to table the motion. It can be taken from the table and if it's not taken back up by the end of the next meeting, it's dead. To kill a motion at the time it is tabled requires a two-thirds vote. So again, and I know that, I remember a past meeting when we were in the middle of discussion on a motion and someone moved to table it. And that was it, I believe. So I'm trying to again, understand through parliamentary procedure of Robert's Rules, what is the right course of action here? So I'm guessing we have the option of amending Mr. Oaks' motion to a specific time and date other than Tuesday at 10 o'clock. I still believe that we have the ability to put this to either a committee or to just table it. My, one of my questions is that if we do either of those two, does it then need to be a special meeting to come back to this question? And if so, one of the things I wonder about with all of this is, what does it cost the Town to hold a special meeting? Because I don't want to take any action on this that is going to force us to have to have a special meeting between now and next Town Meeting to answer that question if it is a costly endeavor for the Town to have a special meeting. So again, I apologize for taking up time on this, but I feel like I want us to do it right.
We, we need to publish legal notices on that. I am not sure what the reformer charges for that, but it is a few hundred dollars.
Yes.
To do that, we have to put up, post the notices of the warning and stuff, which is not very expensive, but we do have, we would have to put a few hundred dollars together to have a special Town Meeting with the legal notices in place.
David, question, and I don't know the procedure's at, but would it be possible to set the time for the thing and then have an amendment saying that if need to be changed by the Select Board, it could be changed? That way, if we got a committee together and they came back saying, well, people said Saturday at 6 o'clock at night would be perfect, that we could change it without having a special Town Meeting?
I'm not sure that we can, but, but that may be possible if there was amendment that if, to change it. Because last year, we voted to authorize the Select Board to set the time of the future meeting because it was all by Australian ballot. Don, do you have any, do you have any wisdom on that? Whether we can amend it to give, make it whatever date we want, but then give the Select Board the authority to change it?
I don't see why you could add that clause. I'm not sure I give a favor of that clause, but.
I don't know if, I don't know if you can. Is it, doesn't the, I thought the law was that the voters have to select the time for the Town Meeting, correct? I don't think that that's the authority that can be delegated to the Select Board unless there's like that.
Like either.
Yeah, that would apply for next year.
I'm not sure that it can either. I think it does have to be. That's why I was saying that we probably need a special Town Meeting.
Yeah, because that's what happened before. So I just don't think that, even if the voters wanted to, I just don't think legally they can. I don't think that's an authority that they can delegate. So I don't think that that can be done.
If I were to speak honestly on this article, I mean, this to me just seems like a very half-hearted attempt to, to try to include more people in our local Town Meeting. To have it be just an open-ended set the time. Like, all of us are here because it works for us. And we're supposed to be deciding on what works for all the people who aren't here? Like, that's just so backwards in my mind. Why, prior to this meeting, there wasn't maybe, you know, the Town could have sent out a survey to say, hey, here are the times that the Town is thinking about having a meeting. If you care to come to the meeting, what time would work best for you? And then simply tally up, you know, what is going to maximize the amount of people that are able to show up at this meeting? But to have an article that's just a blanket, let's set the time for all the people who aren't here right now. It makes absolutely no sense at all until I continue to like try to come up with that time. I don't, I don't see a fair way for that to happen for all the people who aren't here right now. We had a whole bunch of people show up in December, like more than what are here right now. Because that meeting, the central point of that meeting was, how can we include more people in this process? And that's why people showed up, because people care about their right to have a vote. And so right now, we're trying to vote on something that is going to impact only people who aren't here right now. So that's, that's my two cents.
Does this have to be a specific time or can it be a range?
It has to be a specific time. State law gives us the range of between Saturday before the first Tuesday and the first Tuesday. But it has.
Can we vote on that time?
No, we need to set a specific time. That can be changed. It can be, on the floor, it can be amended. Or at a special Town Meeting, it can be changed what time the regular, the annual Town Meeting will be. But no, we have to set a specific time and date. Vote, Kate?
I propose that we set a time and then vote, somebody could go ahead with a committee and find out what the Townspeople think. And then, and only then, pay money to have a special Town Meeting to change what we have set today.
Yep, you know, if the committee was formed and a vast majority of people said, I want it, you know, on Saturday or I want it Monday night. And they brought that back to the Select Board and said, hey, you know, 80% of the people have responded to this as we want it Monday night. Then we could have a special Town Meeting and go from there.
I think what Kate and Wichi and everyone is saying is a great idea. And I think it would make sense to go ahead and to try to set the time and place for the Town Meeting. It'd be like Monday night, stuff when people turn out and then move ahead. And if the committee shows that for some reason that wouldn't be beneficial, then we can move forward. But it seems like the sentiment is to at least try to see if the evening will work. And then if the committee says that doesn't work, then we could change it. But I would suggest.
Well, as of right now, the motion on the floor is 10 o'clock on Tuesday, the first Tuesday in March.
So we have to vote that down and.
No, you can amend it. You could amend it now.
Okay.
Somebody could make a motion to amend it and then we would vote on that. And then we would vote on the original motion.
I would need the motion to amend it to Monday at 6:00.
Monday, the Monday before the first Tuesday in March at 6:00 p.m. Is there a second?
Seven.
All right, so.
That's the first Monday of March.
No, the, the Monday night prior to the first Tuesday in March. All right, it's, and who seconded that?
Everybody.
All right. Is there discussion on the amendment? Don?
I just refer back to Sheri's point about without the election of the town officials, this meeting can be quite considerably shorter.
All right. Tom, did you have something?
I was just going to say, you know, it took us 15 seconds to spend $500,000 now with this for 10 minutes. I go with Steve Oak's, what he got on the floor, and let's vote on it.
All right, wait, what we're voting on now, there is amendment to the initial motion, and the amendment is for Monday, the Monday before the first Tuesday in March at 6:00 P.M. So that's what we're voting on, and then we, if that is changed, we will then go, if that's defeated, then we will go back to the original motion in, in AM, so.
Question.
If, if anybody else hasn't spoken?
I haven't spoken on this motion.
Go ahead, Sheri.
So I want to come back to Emily's question earlier. If we do approve this amendment, so that we are meeting for town meeting on Monday at 6:00, and yes, we know that ballots are available, will the boxes be available for us to deposit our votes in on that time?
I don't believe so. You have to request the ballot by 1:00 on Monday before, and you will have to deliver them to the town clerk, but the boxes will not be out like they are now. And you can't pick one up that night to vote.
Okay, I understand that one. I guess I don't understand why the boxes for depositing them couldn't be available during the town meeting.
Because it holds out open until 10:00 on Tuesday.
Oh, okay, so the boxes, so, so if I had come into town meeting, town office yesterday with my ballot, I wouldn't have been putting it in the boxes, I would have just been handing it to you. Okay, so then on Monday night, if we are there for town meeting, can we hand it to the town clerk at that meeting on Monday night?
You can, but you would have had to have requested it prior to that.
Right, I just, I just want to make sure that if there's a way of enabling people to easily vote that night, and have that taken care of so they don't have to come back out the next day, that we understand clearly what that is.
That, it may be a little confusing, but a person would have to request the ballot prior to it.
Have the ballot when they come to the meeting and then be able to hand it in.
Hand the, hand the envelope in, so.
Great, okay, thank you.
Anybody, yes?
Are you saying we'd have to apply for an absentee ballot?
Yes, yes.
So we'd have to apply for the ballot and receive it and bring it with us to the meeting?
If you wanted to vote on it, and you have the envelope to the town clerk, sealed envelope to the town clerk that night.
It'd be a lot easier to just leave it the way it is.
Just another question.
But just to clarify that position, the minority, you would still have the option to come here on Tuesday, even if town meeting is Monday night, you can come vote on officials on Tuesday in person.
Yes, the, the polls will be open from 10:00 to 7:00 on the first Tuesday for Australian ballot.
But, but if we approve this motion, this amendment, those polls would probably be down at the town office, not here at the state.
We don't know that, so we're not sure, we're not going to, we're not going to specify where the Australian, but anybody else have a question on this?
I think there's some confusion about her question about applying for, you can just get a ballot at the town office, you can stop in and get one.
That's great. It's not an adjuvant process.
You don't have to apply and get it through the mail.
No, you can, but you don't have to.
You don't have to, you can go, just go and get it.
But then that would be a trip down there to get the ballot, and then another trip to get it to the town clerk prior to the, prior to Australian ballot.
I mean, I just want to comment on all this discussion about voting, because we're talking about an inconvenience of, like, however many minutes of your day to, to drop a ballot off, or to get a ballot, or whatever, what's under discussion right now is the inconven, like, you're weighing that inconvenience over, like, a whole bunch of people's ability to be here and have a say and have a vote on what's going on in our town. So, like, I understand the inconvenience of, like, having to swing into town, you know, the town office and have a ballot beforehand or whatever, but I just, like, I want to keep the focus on we're trying to create as inclusive of a community as we possibly can, and that's to have people sitting, filling all of these seats right now and having a say in the town.
All right. Anything else, anybody else have any questions on this? Yes?
So, I, I completely agree, but at the same time, I know that it really is a challenge for many of us to get away from our jobs and our families and everything to be here. So to get here twice really is, really is significant. So I just want to understand, if we moved it to Tuesday night, would that not work because the ballot needs to, means by 7:00?
No, because the, the, I mean, you could, technically you could, but the ballots, it closes at 7:00, and then there's the counting of the ballots. Well, last year, it took us hours to count them, the justices, the town clerk, the board of civil authority were counting the ballots. It would be onerous to try and do that and then count ballots into 1:00, 2:00 in the morning after, after the ballot clerks have been here all day doing ballots. So my, my suggestion would be that no, that that would not be the best solution, and I, I can't say that I know of any town that does it that way. It could be, but I don't know of any.
I mean, it seems to me here like we're acting like we're inventing the wheel. I mean, there's a lot of towns that manage to have a town meeting on one day and vote on the next day.
Correct.
Our town's not that big, it's not that many miles, it may be an inconvenience, but from any of our homes, it's not that many miles from where we live to where we have to go to vote. I think we should do whatever we can do to include as many people as possible, and then we vote on this.
All right. So are we ready for the question? Does anybody have anything else for that? So the amendment is to amend the time to the Monday before the first Tuesday in March at 6:00 P.M. for the town meeting, the in-person town meeting. How do we want to vote on this? Do you make the voice?
Voice.
Well, we can divide the room and stand if you want. All right, we will try that, unless anybody wants to take that. So to, to set the time of future town meetings, the amendment is Monday at 6:00 P.M. before the first Tuesday in March. All those in favor, if you could stand, but I would have Kate and, and.
Steve.
Kate, and seeing if you could come up to help count the ballots, or if you have to stand in, or if you can tell us. All right, all of the favor of the amendment, please stand.
Oh, oh, shit. Does that mean, does that mean we?
All of the votes, please stand. So we'll go back to the original article to set the time of future town meetings as amended, the Monday before the first Tuesday in March at 6:00 P.M. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Yep.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you've set the time of your future town meeting.
So, so the motion that we just gave was to have the Monday.
Article 17, transact any business promptly, come before said meeting.
Is this where we can say that there should be a committee to investigate if that works for everyone?
I think that, I think with all of this, I think we've had enough discussion on that.
Got it.
Dennis?
I think since it's retirement time for Darlene, that she deserves a round of applause.
Standing.
I would just like to mention, because Wichi had brought up about people in town that might be in need, that on page 28, the Campbell Fund is now better defined than it has been. It's not a big fund, as unfortunately, Tina left, but there is monies available for emergency situations, and page 28 will tell you exactly what that is.
Cindy, can you say more on that when you say that it's better defined than it has been?
In the, in the past, people really did not know what the Campbell Fund was for. So it was really something that we saw every year in our town report and sort of scratched our head and said, huh, what is this for? But the, the committee has gotten together, I'm not part of it, but I did do research on it for them, and now they've gotten some nice guidelines in there. So it is available, it's not a big fund, but if it can help anybody in a small way, and once again, it is, it is hoped that the money would be repaid, but if you can't repay it, that's okay too.
Dennis?
Yeah, I would like to request from the select board a response to my request about forgiving that $15,000 owed by the Quick Meeting House Fund. I'd like a response from the select board.
We'll take that up at the select board meeting. That will be brought up for the select board meeting. Anything else, Dennis?
No.
I also wanted to recognize Darlene's many years of service to the town, and give her a couple things from people in the town. So this is a card that everybody just signed for you. And if anyone didn't get a chip, decided, maybe you can get in there. And then this is a gift from the select board and officials.
Oh my gosh, thank you. Thank you very much, so I have a retirement.
Thank you, Darlene.
You're welcome.
Dennis Beebe, the punchman, I did want to make a mention of the fact that Lynn and I, some might consider still newcomers, we've only been here since 1980. But in our 42 years here, we started out with Martha Palin as the town clerk, served well and wonderfully for years, then Marjorie Walker, and then Darlene turned over. So 42 years, we only had three town clerks.
No, we had four.
Four? Who'd I miss?
Pat Kelly.
Pat Kelly?
And Mary.
Mary. Ah, oh, thank you.
So proud.
Yeah, but it's, it's a, not a thankless job, but it can be a difficult job, and Darlene has always been faithful in making herself available to the people of the town, especially when I was running with my tax payment to get in before the deadline, so I paid the ballot, and some of you might have done as well, but, right now, Hannah's going to be there. Yeah, blessed with this.
Well, that's, you know, you give a vote.
Paul, we haven't got.
Count the votes.
She's going to drive. Hopefully, I won't have to say this again, but certainly Darlene's service has been magnificent, and I want it on the official record.
Make sure she records that, right?
Anybody?
Your hand was up.
Does make a motion and we adjourn?
Well.
Just, can I get a clarifying question? The whole select board, it's turning to 5:00, you said it starts now?
Well, I believe at the next meeting that there will be two appointed to fill the positions. But it would take up like now or the next meeting that we have.
Yeah.
And Harold.
So that, so that, so that would be good to make the point that anybody that is interested in filling in one of those two new select board positions, let the board know before their March meeting next week.
Yes, and there's a number of other appointed jobs, the wear wooden cold, the fence viewer, that if people want a job, there are certainly jobs that can be filled, so. Harold makes a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
You.
All those in favor?
Yep.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the meeting will be adjourned.